The Open Direct Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, October 28th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for pledge allegiance and a motion of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
William Brady.
Here.
Phil Clark.
Here.
Jennifer Baker.
Here.
Nicole Emery.
Here.
Andy Bule.
Here.
John Nystery.
Here.
Janice Panco.
Here.
Mr. President, we have four.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be our consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, treasurers report, and bills as listed, items A through C. Support.
Move to support. Any questions, comments? Right here, you know, in all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed, if that passes. Bringing us to our first information item, 5A, the CHRI audit.
Yep. In your packets, there's a letter, should be a letter in there, that talks a little bit about the findings, or lack thereof, findings in our criminal history, record information audit. Congratulations to Crystal Harris, because she always takes care of that. It's, the people that come in and conduct those audits always give glowing unphrasal of what she does and how she takes care of her records. And, you know, it's important during times like this, you want to know who's in your school, and you want to make sure that we're keeping the kids safe. So, thank you, Crystal, for a great job on that.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you.
And so, question about, that letter is, I mean, they had really great things to say. Do they, are we well above average, do you think? They probably see all kinds of...
Yeah, I think, I mean, what they, well, you read, like I said, you read the letter, so it's, yeah, it seems to us that we've done everything. They always leave with a couple suggestions, things that may be across the next couple years you want to take a look at, but, you know, overall, just, she keeps us safe, so thank you, Crystal.
All right, thank you. Moving along, we have our administrative reports.
He's down at the band concert, but Mrs. Lestange has his report she can share with us.
If you can pause to give this gentleman enough time to make his way over to, you guys.
So, Mr. Melrose gave me his, his report tonight. Tonight, SAD is hosting an outdoor showing of Hocus Pocus by the softball fields for grades nine through 12. Band is playing their first ball concert as we speak in the high school gym. NJHS and NHS are having their induction ceremonies this Wednesday. NJHS is at 5:30, and National Honor Society is at 7:00. Point Trumbull Daycare will have their annual trick-or-treat at the high school Thursday morning at 9:30. The 23-24 academic awards for 10th through 12th grade students will be first hour on Friday. Julian Walker, Owen Bennett, Kate Bennett, and Jasmine Walker all placing cross-country originals and will compete at state finals. NJHS is currently hosting a supply drive for the St. Clair Humane Society. Students who donate will have their name entered into a drawing for an Amazon gift card. The NJHS is also holding a cutest dog in cat contest. The students will be able to vote for the winners. Each winner will get a trophy. The pictures will be in the middle school cafeteria. The middle school will have its first dance of the year next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Oxygen. Do you want me to move on tomorrow?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Our beginning band students, the fifth and sixth graders, are off to a great start. They've had their instruments for about a month now, and on November 12th, they'll have their first presentation of what they have going on, and then there will be a little reception in the cafeteria right afterwards for families. Glow Dash between Millside and Elgonquin raised around $18,000 for the PTO. Thank you to Renee Wilson, who heads that up each time that we do it, and the PTO for all the support. They'll also be having their, like, Glow Dash event on November 8th. So, students, depending on how much they raise, they get more glow-in-the-dark flair. And then, they get, we play music, and they get to, you know, go around the obstacles and, you know, around the gym and have all their glow-in-the-dark flair. So, we're looking forward to that. Also, our conferences and book fair went really well. Great sales there again, so we get a lot of books for that kickback. Our student council sold blue grams all this month, and we're making them up almost daily and delivering them to the students at Elgonquin. Fifth grade camp was last week. They had great weather, had a great time as always, so I want to thank the staff who attended and took time away from their families, so that our fifth graders could have such a great time. On Thursday, we have a Halloween parade at 9:30. Millside students will come over, they parade around the school, and then afterwards, they return to their classrooms for whatever holiday festivities that their teachers have organized. And November 20th, our second and third graders will do their Christmas holiday program.
Thank you. Mrs. Pollock?
Earlier this month, we also had a great turnout for our parent teacher conferences at Millside. Book fair went very well also. Our new teaching staff has had the opportunity to attend the new teacher academy at St. Clair County RISA, so they had positive things to say about it, and look forward to continuing that. It's three more sessions throughout the year. We also had the opportunity to have Clay Township Fire Department visit last week, and they met with our students to talk about fire prevention and fire safety, also showing what they look like in their big scary uniforms in case there's ever an emergency, so kids know what to expect. In addition to that, we had the Chick-fil-A leaders also come, so they were able to visit all of our classrooms, meet in small groups with students, give them a stash of books to take home, and also just model some really great leadership from the big kids, as our young ones put it. Weather permitting, we are looking forward to going over to Elgonquin this Thursday at 9:30 for the costume parade, and we'll head back to Millside and engage in activities there. We have lots of parent volunteers signed up to come and join us, so we're looking forward to that. And then, Friday of next week, we'll do the Glow Dash at Elgonquin also, and celebrate our earnings from the PTO and have a good time.
Thank you. Mrs. Bozell?
We have had a busy month of October so far, and this is our third year having our Blue Dash, which was last Wednesday, and went really well. Families had a lot of fun, and the staff loved entertaining and playing different things with our kids. We also had the Clay Township Fire Department out. That's really cute. The kids all love to look at the trunk and hear what they have to say. This week, we had a lot of classroom parties going on, and then Thursday, we will be walking over to the high school to trick-or-treat, and teachers are starting to prepare for parent teacher conferences, which will be next month.
Thank you. And Mrs. Sanders?
Well, it's been a busy month. Everybody has had everything going, and everything's moving along. We have lots of staff signing up for some conferences, which is really great, trying to enhance their practices. So, elementary staff have been going to different reading initiative conferences, and we have some middle school staff going to a math conference to look at how we can make math more engaging, especially at that level. So, that's going on. We also are taking a look at our new teacher training and our teacher mentoring for our new staff coming in. We have been fortunate to hire new staff these past few years, so really taking a look at what we've done well, what we still need to improve on there, to make sure that we're supporting all staff. This week, myself and three teachers, one from each level, will be going to the RISA for the MyKit training, and what that really is, is digging into our scores and taking a look at where we are as a district and where we need to move. So, those preliminary looks at historically where we are, what we're doing well, and where we still need to make some movement there, so looking forward to that. Newsletter went out from the district last month, putting that together again for next month. Good feedback there from some of the community members, liking to know what's going on, so, yeah, things are moving.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? The MyKit was new last year, yes?
No. It's, it's a couple of years, and it's, it just is the new name for school improvement. So, we've always done school improvement. The process now, the site it's housed then, is MyKit. But taking a look at what is our district improvement plan, where are we at, and really, how are we supporting our students through that MTSS process, multi-tiered support services? So, lots of things there, making sure that we have a good process in place, and cleaning it up if we don't.
And with the hosting out at RISA, all the RISA districts are trying to approach it similarly and collaborate, is that...
They do. So, they host it there, and you bring a team, so you do have the other districts there that you can talk to and get some ideas from. They're also there, Krista Dayce, there to help us pull data from different sources if we're, you know, because it's, it can be a lot to look at, especially when we're trying to look at different subgroups, or looking at multiple years in a row. They're there to offer their expertise and where we need to go.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the board reports, agenda, you mentioned you again?
Yes. So, on October 9th, we had the first of the school year, the St. Clair County School Board meeting. So, general membership meeting, they listened to what we had to say. Everybody was in agreement, we should not have a general membership meeting the night of the tech tour. So, it's going to be an April date, it's going to be, we're still working on the date. Our next meeting is in December, so we'll work on the date, and then what we want to talk about, we're still going to have MASB come and speak, if they are available. The new scholarship form came out, and the deadline is March 7. We're going to work for this year, for the county. I don't, I think everyone should have gotten the email about the CPA 253 class board operating procedures that RISA is giving out. I don't know if you guys got it, but on February, or I mean, I'm sorry, November 19th. It's a Tuesday night, it's a virtual class, so if you haven't taken it, it's a really good class. I believe I have already.
Do you remember often CPA, which?
253.
253.
Yeah, board operating procedures. We had a vote again, I was voted in as vice president again for this school year.
Karen's still the president?
Pardon?
Karen.
Yes. We had a representative from SE4 come, which was really nice. He talked about a couple of things that they have going on. I didn't realize that they provide off-campus housing. They're like one of seven community colleges that offer that. So, they did updates on some of their rooms to make them, they used to just be single occupancy, and they did some, and now they're double occupancy, and on the rest, they're going to have available for fall of 2025. So, they have the need for it, so they're going to keep going with it. Also, in the fall of 2026, they're going to offer a two-year dental hygienist program. So, they'll have 26 students that'll be able to take that class every year. That was pretty good. So, this past weekend, Janice and I went to the MAS, MASB ALC, so I want to thank you for letting us go, because that was a lot of fun. It was 75 years, so pretty cool. And she's going to talk about some of the classes that we took, but I got educated on AI, which I did really know a lot about, so I feel a little bit more comfortable about how we can use it in the classroom. Before, it was kind of like scary, like everybody's going to be cheating. Now, it's kind of, I understand it a little bit better, so. Thanks again.
One more question before, Janice. Is the night in April when the, was the county...
Oh, yes, the general membership, yeah.
Are they going to have the students coach?
Yes. Yes. We're going to have a culinary program to go for us. Again, yeah, but they're going to go back to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Janice, go.
Okay. Yeah, the, always, the leadership conferences, always, just, everybody should go. It really gets you motivated, and when you're around the people that are there for the same purpose as you, like, it really keeps your head right in the game, whether you have a busy life, and are in a lot of fifty directions, you have that time to focus on public schools. So, two takeaways that I got from the, we went to the Michigan Council of School Attorneys' Fall, and their Fall Conference, and that was a day-long thing leading up to the delegate assembly. I make it a point to go to those, because they find those to be the most, they're the most up-to-date on everything. They kind of go over what works and what doesn't work with policies that are implemented. So, two things that I felt pertain to our district the most without taking up too much time, I did write things out, because I will forget things. First one being Title IX. We need to get training as a school board on Title IX. That's, we can't be effective without the training. Policy states as following, and I know it's going to be dry, because school meetings are dry, so I'm just going to read it off my paper. All employees will be required to be trained on the school's obligation to address sex discrimination in its education program or activity, scope of the conduct that constitutes sex discrimination, including the definition of sex-based harassment, and certain notification and information requirements. So, that we're going to oversee any sort of investigation that were to come for us, Title IX is always changing and updating, and we should be at least instructed on the foundation of Title IX and why it changes. And it's also important, I know it's on the website, about reporting Title IX incidences, but it's good for parents to know that if their child is struggling, there's a way to reach out, and there's a proper way to reach out, so that an investigation does take place. Because there's a lot of language that revolves around how things are approached with Title IX. Secondly, this one's a little lengthier, regards the Establishment Clause, there was an update to that. The whole title of, of the presentation at that point was, where's the line separating church and state? So, the Establishment Clause is one of two provisions of the First Amendment that prohibits the government from establishing a religion or favoring one religion over another. So, Eileen Tesh has been here at Public Comment, speaking of her quest to get the Ten Commandments hung up in the school, she's repeatedly mentioned the Lemon Test and how it has no longer bailed. So, the Supreme Court uses several tests to determine violations of the Establishment Clause, which I did not know, and I'm glad that I went to this topic, because as much is said here, we need to know facts and work off of that and off of education. So, the Supreme Court uses several tests to determine violations of the Establishment Clause. I want to bring those tests to light for the board and the constituents. Our Public Comment does not, we don't allow, as a, as a school board, really to review anything said during Public Comments, for the best and the health of the board as a whole. So, therefore, I can bring information that I learned from this conference now. So, it doesn't allow the board at large or individual board members to comment when we're subjected to false information. For those unaware, this school board is an obligatory captive audience for all public comments, whether they hold water or not. Same with the schools, same with classrooms. These children are here to learn. The constitutional tests are as follows. In addition to the overturned Lemon Test, there are the coercion test, the endorsement test, and the history and tradition test. All of these are available to seek out, whether online or phone call to Lansing. In each of these tests or rigors, as in the Lemon Test, they're subject to interpretation by those representing any sort of an opinion. The point of these tests is to endorse and encourage critical thinking on those who are entrusted to decide. We have lawyers, board members, judges, just for examples, that what we're doing is in the best interest of our constituents. Public schools are here for everyone, every single person, every race, gender, religion, and economic status. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I do not want our board, as an entity, or our constituents, including our student body, to perceive that we are anything, here for anything but the purpose of preparing young people to be successful in the pursuit of any livelihood they choose. Before my last meeting at the table, I intend to present the board with language that may be useful in the future to protect the district at large from agendas that fit anything but our goals as a district. Public schools are purposely nonpartisan, and we also don't go, we aren't sponsored by corporations or anything, because we're here to educate everyone, so they're able to navigate a society that's inclusive to all. Nonpartisan is not just under the guise of politics, but also any other organized entity. Public schools stand alone, they need to be protected as such. So, these tests that they, that these controversial, whatever, items go through, they're up for interpretation, because nothing is meant to be mandated by one group. It's all, it's public, it's social, so everybody's supposed to go with their interpretation is, and whatever the, whatever the place may be, whatever they would decide to focus on, which in our case is education, and facts for everybody. That's why they exist, and so the Lemon Law is not just the only test, there's several, there's much more to it.
Janice, quick question on the Title IX stuff. Is, was MASB mentioning that they were offering training?
They are, and I don't know if it was brought up as one of the items, but they did also, they also are, as part of their 75-year anniversary, they're gifting each district, I believe it was $750 towards a class or, or something that we could do, so we could possibly use that money to bring somebody here to take Title IX, whatever.
Or Trune would be the other option.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, Trune's. Ryan and Broker ready have been signed up for the new laws on, on new Title IX stuff.
Who's our Title IX, what person?
Mr. Melrose.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, he went last week, they had his training, because they, now everybody's going to have to be retrained in it, and that's probably why they're bringing it up at MASB, too.
Yeah, all the teachers and everybody will be in the training room.
Teachers at the beginning of the year get, there's, there's a series of videos that they have to go through, and so it'll be updated again this year. But in addition to that, we've spoke with Jean Surtridge from the RISA, our RISA attorney, and she has a little bit more than she'd like to add to that to cover the new requirements. So, next year, when we sit down to do that, or maybe whenever she gets the presentation taken care of, she'll be presenting in different districts.
Is that something that we could also join in on that training?
You know, I can ask her.
Because I mean, that, we do that training, it might work, so.
Yeah.
It may not be exact to every person, but you get a good overview.
I believe, I believe we can, because she's going to have a lot of requests for her to come up to districts, so I'm sure that we could include school board within that.
Well, they also have different tiers of training. They have a basic Title IX training, which is what I think is what we need.
Right. The base.
Or a governing board, what we need to know. That's probably where MASB might be stronger, if they're tailoring it, right, as a school board. Well, thank you both for attending. Anything else? Board reports? Mr. LaToz?
Yep. Couple items for you today. Crystal's made sure that you got copy of the superintendent evaluation. I will, by the end of, by the end of next week, I will have my copy sent to you. I always send that out a couple of weeks advance, so you could go through it, and then, obviously, see how that matches up with some of your interpretation of that. So, I will make sure to get that, like I said, by the end of next week for you. If you were able to, I don't know which way you came in, but if you've been up and down the hallways, we have decked ourselves out in muskrat pride-type slogans throughout, not only educational slogans, but welcome to the swamp, grow muskrats. It's up and down every single hallway, and it's been great. Kids have had all kind of good things to say about it, talking about how it feels like a, like, someplace they want to be when they look up there, there's that sense of pride there, and it's kind of what we were shooting for when we did that project, so. We're going to continue it on, it'll be the front two, or the hall, front hallway, and then the cafeteria hallway, and then hopefully sometime this summer, get back to the gym area and be fully decked out. So, if you haven't, take a, take a run down there, they're, they're pretty cool looking. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about today, and I had mentioned this before, if you've been to some of the MASB stuff, it certainly comes up there. Salary schedules for basically anybody that is not in a bargaining contract, so that would be our administrative team, that would be our administrative assistants. We've got a group of probably about 20 people that would fall into that category. And what was happening is, when the ORS started to look at these things, they would acknowledge the fact that incrementally, teachers and people in bargaining contracts, because they follow a scale, would increase from the time they started into education all the way up. And so, they didn't have a problem with that. What they started to have questions on were people that do not have that skit, that scale to go up. And so, what, there was a lawsuit that came up, it's Batista versus, I believe it's, or Batista's the, the one side of it, and what it came down to was, people were starting to get ready to get retired, and they find out that they were looking back at their salary sometime when they took that position over, as opposed to when it ended. And it became quite a big deal, and over the course of the last few years, it went back to the Supreme Court, where they caved in interpretation of what we're dealing with now. So, MAS, which is the superintendent's group in the state, they have instructed us to come up with a salary schedule for every single employee that is not in a group. Unfortunately for us, sometimes that means 20 different contracts or 20 different scales, because we have, you know, unlike some districts where there's five assistant superintendents and, you know, 10, 15, 20 principals, we have one at each level, so we have a lot of different individual contracts that will be out there. I'm going to bring it to you next month for your approval, or at least to put on for discussion for approval down the road. And the idea of it is, they've said, use a conservative number, like 2% to 2.5% to 3%, somewhere in there, increase, with the idea that we would obviously adjust it based on our increases from the state. In other words, I wouldn't lock into that, but the idea is to see, show that there's a history of how they've incrementally got there. Some of the heartburn on this was that there were people in positions of administration where they would, all of a sudden, in their last three years, have this big jump by $20, $30,000, because that's what your retirement's calculated on. And so, they're trying to avoid it, they don't want to see that big jump at the end, because it's kind of like a pad in your, you know, pad in your retirement, I guess you could say. So, they are just really looking to make sure that it's a consistent incremental step up the ladder, and so I'll present those to you next month. Actually, I probably shouldn't, in between now and then, so you can take a look at them, I'm almost done with them.
Is that something you need to vote on in November?
Yeah, well, it, because it will be adopting a salary schedule, so, yeah, it probably, like I said, I'd like to give it to you, so you can look at it, so if you have questions, so maybe we'll take it as action in December or something like that, or even January.
And it's a, it's a, did I hear right? It's kind, it's a schedule, but it's, you can't, you're able to deviate from it?
Yeah.
As circumstances?
And we put, and we put in there, this is based on a standard year, but that there would be times that we would be, we would obviously look at what the budget was for that year and adjust based on that.
Some of these be included in their contracts then, moving forward?
Yeah, I, for lack of a better term, they're kind of become your individual contract, but we have, we do have a master agreement that has our P20 people and our administrators in there, so it could all be kind of under that window as an appendix to it, so that's where it would be. A couple more things, Parent Advisory Group I had talked about, we met, and I, and I shared that with you in one of the Friday updates, but just wanted to let you know, that went well. I think next time we do it, we're, I did it all as one group, I think next time, I'm going to split it into elementary and secondary, because a lot of the discussion was kind of unique to, there was a group that wanted to talk about, you know, secondary stuff, and then a group that wanted to talk about elementary stuff, and I think it would just be better to split that group, so I think that's what I might look at doing next, next time around. But good group, good discussion, good, good stuff, great suggestions. It's really what I was looking for in that, was to get some feedback and to get some ideas on how we could better ourselves, so that was a good thing. And then, last but not least, the bleachers, football season is done, and the bleachers tomorrow, I think they'll be out here and cutting away and ripping away at our bleachers and taking care of that, so. So it's kind of exciting too.
And do they keep going as long as the weather holds out?
That is the plan. That is the plan. Yep, they, they, you know, they're on kind of a fast track, which will be interesting to see because, you know, they're talking about the tear down, taking a couple of days. And I mean, it's not like they're gonna be dissembling the bleachers. They're coming in, I'm assuming with cranes or something, that they're gonna be taking that stuff down pretty quick. We just had to, you know, had to get some stuff out of there and peel back the electricity, all that kind of thing. But it's, it's pretty exciting, so.
I find quite a bit of the metal detector under those bleachers.
Probably, yeah, probably a fortunate change too down there somewhere, I'm sure. But yeah, it's, so that's it.
All right, thank you. We have one visitor, Ms. Tesh. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Latos, for your letter. And I do stand corrected that the thirty-one percent that I reported at the meeting from the U.S. News and World Report, as you said, came from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty year. It didn't say that, but be that as it may, and then you gave me a snapshot of one test on one day. The bottom line is, as you concluded, these scores are not the level that we would like for our students. And we agree that we need to continue to improve. And that's the only reason I'm here, is that we deserve, are these students, this community deserves the best of the best. And we certainly have the funds. We just need to figure out what's the best way to accomplish, thank all. And the second reason that I'm here is because a number of parents reached out to me, and I'm surprised you didn't talk about it this evening. But a letter went out from Principal Ryan Melrose on October twenty-fourth. Dear parents and guardians, earlier this week, school administration was made aware of the allegation of a possible inappropriate use of technology. The school and the law enforcement have investigated the incident and have found the accusation was based upon false information, and there is no danger to the school or the students. Well, that has left a lot of parents perplexed, worried. Some that have been, have heard about Halloween Day and they're keeping their children home. So I would ask, I don't know what the policy is, but that there be something, a town hall, something to explain what this vague letter means because they're concerned. And finally, as you, I'm sure you heard that Governor Weber signed a law that now fourteen-year-olds can be referred to an abortion, referred for an abortion without the knowledge or consent of the parents. And so the Ten Commandments now is the least of my concern. It's what the policy is gonna be for the school and for the administration with that law coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to item, seven action items. We have two action items for tonight, the first of which is the extension of our resource officer. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Because our students deserve it, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the school resource officer agreement between Clay Township and Algonquin Community Schools ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Support.
We've supported. Any questions?
Just, and like I said, we, this is our third run of renewing the contract. This year, the cost is up a little bit, just like anything. You know, Officer Prado's salaries increased over the course of, ironically, the last three years, we kind of were able to keep it the same, but this year it's caught up. You know, he's, like everything insurance, salary wages up. So that's why that number's a little bit higher than it had been in the last contract.
Yeah, it's been a fantastic.
It's been a fantastic thing for them.
Thank you for making that happen.
Yeah, it's, and I did reach out, I know Jen did, to, to our B over at Clay Township just to thank them for that continued, you know, that's a big chunk of their budget as well. But they understand how important that is too, so.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Last is the resolution for our summer tax collection.
Make a motion to approve the summer annual tax resolution as presented, calling for one hundred percent summer collection of school property taxes in two thousand twenty-five with a copy of the resolution to be provided to local governing bodies prior to January first, two thousand twenty-five. Complete copy, the resolution shall be attached to the minutes.
Support. We've supported. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Well, come to a juror.
Support. Have a good evening. Oh, totally. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed.
I've never heard anybody saying no.
No, I did once, but I was just meeting in the smirnель.